Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. We, on letter G, we're gonna eliminate, consider approval of contract with livestock for school safety. We'll wait to have a funding stream for that. That will come before the board. We're gonna more specifically talk about the funding stream and get that specified before the approval process. Uh, we still plan to move forward with that, but I'm not comfortable with where all our funding to be determined. Um, the other would be, you should have an addendum. And moving item D one, farm-to-school presentation will be moved up to item BV one, which will be prior to the executive session. Also, in additional recommended actions under F, number two, new business letters. I believe that would change those letters and so on. Make sure I have that correct. Each. So it would be letter H. Consider approval of child nutrition cooperative agreement, recognize recommendations to approve the CNC agreement as revised. And then on your denim, that would change to I. Consider approval of rehire retirees for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Recommendations to approve hiring district retiree Dan Dunbar as a bus driver. And retiree Elsie Gray is a bus driver for the district for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The district policy four three zero two.
Okay, we now need to adopt the agenda. Uh, for any of all of those adjustments, do I have a motion?
Somebody?
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented this evening, please sit with a head by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We will now go to, uh, farm-to-school program presentation by Carla Banks, WBE Child Nutrition Program State Director.
I don't know what more. Maybe Matt already took it from here. I know it's so. Um, yeah, this is Carla Banks. She's with the WD and she is the child nutrition state director. And so she's, um, launching her program to get far and she's the one who came here for the AR of the USDA. And she's just gonna come and say to us about farm-to-school programs and Kathy, um, to stay away from me right now. Okay, well, thank you for having me. And I'm not a real farm-to-school person. We have someone Bobby Lane, but he has a state fair. So we've got to meet tonight. Um, and so the next slide, that's our contact information. So farm-to-school is like a good part of my job. I'm usually a podder, so that's not always fun. Um, and I was, um, I was the food service director in Cheyenne. And before that, I was in Colorado for twenty-five years. So I love schools, school lunches in my life. And this is the fun part of our job because there's really not a lot of regulations about it. And so that's always good. So farm-to-school is simply just bringing local products into our schools for our school wage kids to have. And local is undefined. But we in Wyoming, we like to serve Wyoming and not Nebraska, Colorado, Utah. If it's seeped over the border, it's okay, but we'd like to stay in Wyoming. So next slide. The, the thing that I'm trying to promote around here tonight is we have a big USDA grant right now for farm-to-school. It's a four-year grant. It took me a year and a half to get someone hired. So we started only in November. Our grant actually ends in twenty-twenty-six, September twenty-twenty-six. So we have this big grant to promote our producers getting into our schools. Bobby Lane, um, he's a farmer rancher out of the Fremont area. He is, his job is to drive up all corners of the state and hook up producers with the schools that want to participate. Um, there's no financial commitment to participate in farm-to-school. It's simply the schools just buy local and serve it to the kids. So next slide. Um, our current activities, we have a lot going on. I heard someone over here talking about, uh, in Casper, they have a lot of greenhouses. So one of the schools has greenhouses. Um, we get a lot of grant modifications for schools. They want to do like school gardens and stuff. We can definitely help you with that. Um, local beef, we all know Wyoming's a beef state. That's kind of our biggest product that we can get into the schools. We have a lot of processors in the state that love this program. They're willing to work with schools. Um, so we love having local beef in our schools. There's a lot of confusion about the funds that the food service department brings in. They, there's this feeling that they can't be spent on local animal. And that's an absolute myth. Um, the food service account can't pay for local animals and the processing of it. So you don't have to have a grant. It doesn't have to be donated. It can be, but you can spend your own money on it too. Um, we have organized, you know, kids to go out to local farms, ranches to actually. If I was driving in today, I was like, oh, these kids probably know what agriculture is because you have a bunch of tractor places on the way in. You have sugar grain. So I was like, okay, these kids are probably more familiar than the kids in Cheyenne and Casper and stuff. But I mean, some of our kids don't know that corn actually comes on a cob. You know, that it's just this young stuff. This beans actually come to us dry. They don't come out of a can. So that's what this program is to teach us. Um, the crunch off, I'll talk about that in just a minute. Um, producer presentations we have up north in the Big Corn area. The producers out there love going to the schools. I don't know why, but they are always, that's what this picture is. This guy, I think his name is Farmer Joe, and that's what he likes to be called. And, uh, he goes to the schools all the time and brings his, he does baking reads. And he's always bringing them and teaching them that, you know, salad doesn't come in a bag. It comes out of the ground very dirty and we have to wash it and stuff like that. And then we want to also work with our, our clothes and stuff in the schools. Um, our FFAs, they're a great resource for us. Our family consumer science, farm-to-school is to bring all those people together. Uh, next slide. So the big thing we have going on this fall is farm-to-school. Love Farm-to-School Day. With our grant, we have a bunch of money for promotional stuff. So October second. We can tell Ramona to put this on her calendar, but, um, we would like every school in the state to promote a local product that day and serve it on their school lunch menu. We have a corn producer that grew five acres of corn for our schools. We have some donated dried beans. We have a bunch of people that just got a bunch of cattle donated from Halloween fairs. Um, anything and everything that you can think of to put it on, to put it on your menus and serve it that day. We have a ton of promotional items that we'll be sending out from WDE. They're free. Promote the heck out of it. And we just really want our kids to realize, you know, what's, what's in our fields when we drive down New Haven Highway is really for human consumption and the process and bringing it for, as we all know, local is healthier, safer than, you know, than it coming from New Jersey or something. So next slide. This is the crunch off. This is the USDA program. Wyoming is, for as avid a culture as we are, we're years behind other states because we just didn't have the funding. And then we got this big grant, like, um, in Montana, they actually have something called Montana Marinara. They grow their own tomatoes in Montana. They send it to a centralized kitchen. They process it and they have the flavor profile that the kids in Montana like. In every school, when they serve spaghetti or lasagna or dipping sauce for their pizza sticks, it's Montana homegrown, home processed, home canned Montana marinara sauce. So that's an example. Like with Montana, Colorado has crazy programs. Wyoming just had nothing. And so this is our first go at it. We want to keep it going. So we're gonna participate in the crunch off this year. The USDA program, Dennis Bree. Most states crunch into an apple in October. You have the kids crunch into a local apple and you count the crunches and you turn in the number to USDA and it's per capita. So Wyoming can get it. Um, not the number of crunches, but, uh, and then you get an award. And we were in the mountain plains region and Nebraska has always won. No one else in the mountain plains has ever won. Because what Nebraska does is they make everyone at one of those cornhuskers football games crunch. They give them all an apple. And they count those as their crunching. I know we don't grow very many apples here, but you can crunch into beef, you can crunch into lettuce, you can crunch into whatever you want. So we're just asking every school to do that sometime in October, hopefully October second. We'll count the crunches and we'll see if we can get the award for Wyoming because you know, I'm very competitive. I don't like that Nebraska hasn't had it for that long. So we need to break through. Uh, next one. So the resources we have is we can, we can provide training. We can come out and do these things for you guys. We do producer training, we do school district training, anyone that wants to find out about it. Um, we can connect you guys with producers. We have USDA resources, logs of those. We get grants that we can hand out. In the past, we've had mini grants, which we could give a school district money to build their own hoop house. We can, you know, pay for some irrigation. We can help the ag club, you know, purchase some cows, grow them, donate them back to the school food service. There's all kinds of stuff we can do when we get mini grants. We work with UW a lot and their extension services to try to connect that level. Next slide. Um, this is the one you guys might have heard of. This is actually funded by the Wyoming Letters later. They gave us, they give WDE twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which is not much. Um, and what it is, is if you get a donated animal, you can apply for the grant and we can pay for fifty percent of the processing. It has to be donated and it has to be an animal that we're allowed to be served in our program. We cannot serve wild game. So it's, you know, a deer or something we can't serve. If you cattle, lamb, goat, uh, something like that. And those applications go out in September in the weekly communications. If you're interested in that. Next slide. This one is, I get this all the time, is, well, we're part of a co-op. I heard you changed the agenda to talk about the co-op. Um, you guys, it's always smart to be part of a co-op for your food service. You just get better prices and better service. But just because you're a member of a co-op does not mean you cannot purchase locally. You can do small purchases. You, you know, it's how the farmer wants to be paid, um, or the rancher wants to be paid. So a USDA worth million, and I'm telling you millions of dollars into farm-to-school. They just awarded across the country one point one billion dollars for the next fiscal year in farm-to-school across the country. So they, this is the program they believe in. So they're not going to put restrictions on you, not allowing you to purchase it. So, you know, when USDA loves something, they put money towards it. I've worked in this a long time. And, and so it's not going to go away. If you are, if your school district wants to go and do some farm-to-school local purchases, we have an accountant on our staff. She's been there twenty-seven years. She knows this stuff inside and out. Her name is Susan Binney. I can hook you up with her, but we don't want you to be scared because of our rules that we put on the program that you can't purchase locally, but you most certainly can. Next slide. And do you all have any questions for me? It's, it's really a very, very simple program. Buy local, serve local. No questions? And I brought you all some business cards and some stickers because I have more stickers than I know what to do with. They're really nice. They're vinyl stickers. You can stick them on your water bottles and I'll put them over here for you guys. Well, thank you.
Carla, I do have a quick question. Um, you said that the, the grant is twenty-five thousand dollars, um, which isn't a huge amount, but last year it didn't get all huge, right?
Right. So what happened last year? We had a lot of people apply for it. So we had to do a fair share. One district, they, she got like nineteen cows donated. And so that, that was a big processing expense. And so they applied for it and we had a fair share because we want everyone to get something. And, um, they only turned in two thousand dollars of what they had asked for. So we still have fourteen thousand dollars from last year that didn't get used because they just didn't turn in the receipts. So I, I don't let it discourage you that other districts have applied for it for years and gotten money because it never gets completely used. So, yes. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Okay. We will now move to letter C, which is our executive session for legal matter. Do I have a motion for a victory?
So moved.
Is there a second? All of you, they were immediately in session for December five, nine, nine.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. We will now move down to. Item number two, under information proposals. It's introduction of the new district administrator. I just have Mr. Allen and Tilburg. Saying, I don't know. We've had different opportunities to have you speak a little bit, but just to give you a little bit of background. Mr. Tilburg is coming to us from Columbia. Previous to that, he was in Lawrence, Nebraska for a number of years. Getting started in the process of administering Torrington High School. He took part in the coaches and the parents meeting last night. And so I had an opportunity to meet with the parents and things and then my boss involved. I have the in-service citizen base, you know, even had. He had the opportunity to camp in a year up in the earth seed and already so. We're all excited to have Mr. Til- Van Tilburg, part of the district and really looking forward to. Having him continue with the work that he's already started with our staff and students.
Hey, number three is reports on the twenty twenty four summer school. Dave, so new school, summer school principal, Tyler Porcher.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I won't make a lot of time for you guys to read. So I'm Tyler Porcher. I was a summer school principal for Southeast LFL and Torrington Elementarys this year. Our summer school session was July twenty eighth, or excuse me, July eight through the twenty sixth, Monday through Friday. We had a. Torrington attendance, Southeast attendance, and then LFL attendance areas that. All had kids throughout those fifteen days of the summer school session. I do want to start off by thanking the staff that committed to, committed their summer for those fifteen days for. Our students here in Goshen County. In Torrington, we had Jason Bowers, Jessica Lassard, Susan Keller, Stacy John. Stacy Bulmer. Ambrosio Chavez. Alyssa Green, Emily Buchanan with Todd Summer School in Torrington area. So I want to thank them for their hard work. LFL, we had she will ever, Kim Porcher, Katie Keller, Michelle Cookendall, Shirley Lawrence and Kendra Vetter. They all supported the LFL students. Southeast, we had Teresa Lobston, Beth Correa and Mike Steadens. I also want to thank Ramona and the food service department for providing lunch for us in our summer school session. Really appreciate those, those ladies did an amazing job. We were fortunate enough to be able to get hot meals for Southeast and Lingle every day. So I went up in suburban. I drive out Southeast and we go to lunch for the day and snack the next day. LFL, the same thing, and back to Torrington every day. So. It was nice. They didn't have cold sandwiches. They got a nice hot lunch every day. We got to go see each other's schools and talk with the kids and teach them everything that's available. I'm just going to go over some attendance numbers and some recommendation numbers. I'll start with Lincoln Fort Laramie. Forty-four students were recommended in the recommendation process that I had teachers vote for where. I set out a spreadsheet. They recommended a student for summer, which they're going to put what? Two math and two reading skills that student either need to continue to master. More support on, or needed extra help on before the next school year. And I also had them put what current ordinary hand concept the student had left out at the end of the year. So. If they went through the whole school sequence, that was great. Say, you know, we got the concept twenty-three in, in first grade. Then the summer school teachers knew where their skill set was. So then we designed a specific targeted instruction based on the skills that the students did. Each teacher created a post-assessment. And a pre-assessment. So we gave the pre-assessment before summer school, the very first day. Over those targeted skills, we instructed specifically on those skills for fifteen days. We gave that same assessment as a post-assessment to see which growth we had on the targeted skills. So it was. Nice because it wasn't so broad. We really targeted. You know, whole machine of targeted skills that you're seeing growth through your, on those skills, not just. Here's how much growth over all these skills. So you really, really find that all those would be awesome. So recommended students for Lincoln Fort Laramie were forty-four students who attended. Twenty-four students attended. Seven of those students missed five of the more days. So I consider five or more days not any of their attendance for this. At Southeast, there was twenty-seven students recommended sixteen. Attended and only one student missed five more days at Southeast. Lincoln Elementary students that attended, there was eighty-six that were recommended. Forty-six attended and we had twelve of those students miss five of the days. Trail Elementary students, eighty-eight were recommended, forty-five attended. And we had thirteen of those students miss five of the days. So we had a lot of recommendations. About fifty percent participation and we had quite a few students miss five of the days, which is kind of a long range of a third of. The summer school session. So we went through the stated processes that we do in school year. We call, ask them where they're at. They need any help. It didn't hear this sentence. We can't use the same policies for some people. Just that, I'm not going to go over all the data. If you guys would like to see it sometime, I'd be more than happy to sit down and share it with you, but. We targeted some really specific skills. Out of Southeast, for instance, we targeted some three group, the three grade rules, our OG concept, which are major hint point goals for our spelling and reading. So we had students go from. Three out of fifteen efficient on that pre-assessment. To fourteen out of fifteen provision on the post-assessment. So right. We had students who grew a lot. We had students who grew a little and we have quite a few students who maintain, which I would say if you're growing or maintaining that for summer school is. Is, is a good thing. We've always wanted them to grow, but we were able to maintain a lot of students with a lot of students. We did some red word and green words for our OG stuff and some kindergarten and first grade. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that terminology. We had some students grow really, really well in that two out of twenty-five to fourteen out of twenty-five that's where we spoke for that one. Again, we had some students in some grades who grew. Not as much as we want, but it was still growth. So we celebrated that growth when we started students. It was a great, great session. Really appreciate the hard work of all teachers and. Appreciate you guys allowing us to have that opportunity for our students. Yes, have questions.
I have a question. When you talk about the pre and post-assessments, are those that happen during the regular school year or do you do that during the summer?
During the summer school session. So for instance. This off topic, I guess. So we have a, we have a, a group of first graders from whatever school and their teacher recommended. Seven out of, seven of their first graders and most of those first graders really fell down and needed some support on oral reading. So a first grade teacher was able to specifically design an assessment on oral reading, who was these four of those kids in the summer school session? Give them that assessment. Teach specific strategies for all reading students and give them that same one to see their growth on that targeting teacher. So it knocked the same assessment out of them. Remember that was, now I will say there were a few of the ordinary hand concept, concepts that we did use. Some of the RBC assessments that we would use. It was just easy for teaching those skills and those assessments are already on their teaching. So you just use them to create them. Yeah, math we created, some of our own, I know Mr. Bowers did a lot of pre-teaching in that first. Concept or first topic before the recap with incoming fifth graders and incoming sixth graders, he gets some. Higher level stuff with them because they're important sixth graders. So we did use some of that to pre-teach some of the concepts coming in with that speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave, you're going to be secondary summer school principal, Dave Mark.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's a lot nicer to be up here instead of. Last year, I literally got finished with the football games, printed, printed off a couple of things and came right back here to go talk to you and stuff and all over the place. So. Thanks for doing it tonight. I appreciate it. So I have middle school and high school kiddos for summer school. First, to get things going truly with, without the staff that, that I was fortunate enough to work with, none of this happens. Also, it doesn't happen without the approval of the board and also with the approval from the administrators over at Central. For my middle school, the teachers that I had for math, I had Lonnie Saranzen. She worked the first two weeks of summer school for me. And then I had Mary Warner do the second two weeks of summer school for the middle school math. For language arts, I had to beg, borrow and plead and almost sell my soul, but I did get Emily Catrell to go in there and, and work for me. And that was tremendous to actually have. Someone that really works with high school kiddos. To work with middle schoolers because I really felt like she was able to say, hey, this is what's up and coming to you guys. And, and honestly. She was a tremendous asset to our team. Her, her professionals, I had Terry Lindell, Ashley Winter and Denise Grant. And then of course, my brain of the outfit was Brandon Clark. She was my secretary. Could not have done summer school without her. I would also like to thank my custodians, Mr. Ramato and his crew over at TMS. For making sure that everything was clean and that the rooms were taken care of. I know that they had to go through and do a quick thing of the eighth grade hallway. Which is where I work over at TMS in the school year. Had that all. Everything moved out, everything pushed back in before summer school started in a week. So that was really appreciated that they were truly working around those. Couple of key points for the middle schoolers, middle school summer school was successful. I truly had minimal conflict with the kiddos. When they were there, they were there to work. As in how many kiddos I had attend, I had thirty-six students attend middle school. For summer school, I did have a few of them leave towards the end because of different conflicts. We did hold our summer school in June. It was from June third until June twenty-seventh. We went four days a week for four weeks. So a total of sixteen days. Students at the middle school level, they have the opportunity to do math or language arts. For students that attend, if they are requested for both, then they get an hour of each subject area. However, if I have a student that is only requested for math, that student can come in, work an hour. I did, I was a little more leaning this year to where I had some students that were like, do you mind if I'm here for the two hours? And I would converse with my teachers, whoever it was, and then say, hey, why don't they do the two hours? It's not going to hurt any of us to have a little bit more practice. And that seemed to work really well. The two hour split session, I did have two different sessions between the thirty-six kids. As I said, language arts was by Mrs. Catrell. And she really worked on having students learn and own the following skills. How to write a thesis statement that is not limiting, how to annotate a text and look for valid reasons. Opinion versus facts, facts or evidence, camera claims, vocabulary work, which was unit, unit specific. Independent reading and writing a summary conclusion. At the very end, they, they did. Pretty much everything went into compiling an essay that was kind of the end product. And the kiddos really put in a lot of work. All students worked on literary skills that will aid them for the white talk and success in future, future language arts classes. For math. The curriculum for math was real life engaging activities such as finding a party and they had to figure out what cost would be involved with this little party that they wanted to throw. They would also use. Delta Math, which allowed them to practice their skills, game kit, which was fun, interactive and motivating. Game-based math, decimals. Lessons interactive with a use of virtual manipulators. Certain targeting specific grade level power targets and differentiation and engaging activities. Miss Saranzen and Miss Warner did an amazing job of using multiple digital math lessons. That follow the scope and sequence of your regular math and aligned with our Wyoming state standards. Truly, I was able to see the work ethic and the overall appreciation that are, that my middle school staff had for their students. Pertaining to star data and math, there was twelve students that showed growth. Two that remained consistent and six that showed minor loss. In reading, I could say towards the end, because we did take star at the very beginning and then we took it on the last day. The last day, I tried my best to get kiddos there. We had a pancake fee. Apparently I didn't mark those pancakes to get them all there. And then also kiddos that had perfect attendance, they also received. And then also kiddos that had perfect attendance, they also received like a five dollar gift card to AJ's. But anyway, it was just something to give back and let them know that their work, their willingness to come in during summer school or during the summertime. Is seen and it is appreciated. In reading, we had three students that showed growth, one that remained constant and five that showed minor loss. Now I will, I guess I'll, I'll talk about this as well. I also want to thank the administrators that helped me get ready for. Middle school, that's Mr. Catherine, Mr. English, Mr. Tim Williams from Southeast, Mr. Corey Gilchrist. Before learning, and of course the counselors, Kelsey Grant, Chandler Fleming, Manifogle. Ashley Nice Wonger over there at TMS and Darcy Lawrence. Ashley was a huge help for me. I am not used to doing a lot of purchase orders. It's not something that I get to do all the time. So fortunately, they, they are kind enough to be to help me out in areas which I lack. So I go to the people that know things. Fortunately, Ashley was kind enough to help me out. Now pertaining to high school. For high school, really, I've, I've tried to keep the same team of educators that I had in years past. Kim Snyder, she was my English teacher. A new person was Robert Morehouse. He taught history for me. Aaron Estes, the second summer doing math for me. And then I had Ben Borrow and whatever to have Mr. Spears go in there and be generous enough to at least overlook and oversee. The science courses that were being taken during summer school. As in her professionals, Lisa Ono, Anthony Hile, tremendous, put in a lot of work with these high schoolers. The numbers for a secondary summer school was lower than usual. And that was part of the, the change in grade policy. So I had twenty-four secondary students that attended summer school. Of those twenty-four students that attended summer school, we had thirty-four semester credits that were recovered. Now to give you some idea of what that looks like, the year before. So two summers ago, I had over fifty kiddos. I think I had fifty-two, fifty-three kiddos that participated in the summer school. And I had about forty-seven semester credits that were recovered. Truly this smaller group and, and being able to have that really almost one to one. And many instances with a teacher really did help those particular students at summer school. In science, we had two credits earned, one semester biology and one semester physical science. In math, we had eighteen credits that were earned. One for trig algebra. Two credits for algebra one point five. Eight credits for algebra one. Five credits for geometry and then two credits for algebra two. And in English, we had ten credits that were earned. We had six credits for English one, two credits for English two and two credits for English three. And in history, we have world civilizations and cultures in which there were four semester credits earned. And just to reiterate, I couldn't have done this without the opportunity for Mr. Cream or Mr. Derby. I could not have done this without the approval from the board as well. Next, I'd like to thank my, my team of parents and educators. Truly, they go in and, and. They pull up their sleeves and, and they work with some of the toughest kiddos within the district in summer school. And every single day they're in there and, and, and they're working from the moment that they get to school to the moment that they leave. And I really appreciated their willingness to do so. I also, I'd like to thank my high school students. There was a few that I tracked down to make sure that they got AJ's gift card. Because I know that it wasn't exactly their favorite thing to be there. But yet they, they put forth the effort and, and ended up with a good result. Additionally, I would like to thank Ms. Nickel, Mrs. Lautner and Ms. Snazi. Mrs. Fleming and Mr. Bartlett for the, for the high schoolers. Also, lastly, I cannot forget this. Thank you to the tech crew at the Ocean County School District. Thank you Anna for getting computers ready for summer school. Thank you Pete for getting the summer school phone set up. And printers for the teachers who are outside the building. And thank you Dustin Rose for inviting some transition for teachers to input final grades for summer school. That is all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, number four is annual recognition, developmental delay classification.
So page four of your packet, don't know this one, but I'll hand them. This is the same memory item that we have had, I think, for previous years. So as part of the, the process and reviewing that requirement that we should form the board. This is not an action item, but an informational item for the board to have.
Thank you. But E in public forum, you're not having to go into detail. We'll go down to letter F, recommended actions. Number one is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member would give the poll this evening?
My only question, Mr. Chair, is I would like to amend the minutes for the July seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Meeting. And so I don't know what the appropriate way to do that is, but.
We would pull that. Yeah, we can pull in then we have a discussion where that would be items to be added or deleted or corrected. And then we have a vote in the board on that specific one.
Then I would ask that the meeting minutes for July seventeen, twenty twenty-four be pulled.
Any other items?
I did, I did have a question. You know. Under J. Anybody know what difference it takes in this new AB package?
We certainly can, yeah. It is the same cost for, as last year.
Oh, so it's not, really not, you know, that is.
And that, that has been the package that they have recommended for the last two years. I don't know from previous years if there was. Other addition things to that. It's going to look the same.
Any other amendments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with letter A, poll, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those. Any extensions? Okay, we will move to the letter A, when the consent agenda, the minutes is July, special meeting, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. In the July seventeen, twenty twenty-four, special meeting.
Would you just like me to tell you what amendment I would like made? Okay. Sorry, new at this. I am asking that the meeting minutes for July seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Be amended to notate immediately before it says Chairman Sussex adjourned the meeting at seven fifty-one PM to include. That trustee Mohler requested permission to attend the meeting via Zoom. Given the recent scrutiny and public records requests that we have received, I would like that to be notated. It is also available on the YouTube link for the meeting as well.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for July special meeting, July ninth, regular meeting, and the July seventeen special meeting with those two amendments, please. And I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July special meeting, July ninth, regular meeting and the July seventeen special meeting. So, may I? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the July special meeting, July ninth, regular meeting and the July seventeen special meeting. Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? Hey, we will move down to new business. Letter A, accept late resignation submitted by certified staff member. A late resignation submitted by halftime district MTS S coordinator, Brandon Upland. Do I have a?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the late resignation, resignation submitted by halftime district MTS S coordinator, Randy Upland, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter B, consider approval of offering certified contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve offering a teaching contract to Trent Weiss as a halftime physical education teacher. And a halftime academic interventionist at Torington Middle School. And then employment agreement with Allison Werny as a district social worker. Do I have a moment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of offering a teaching contract to Trent Weiss? And an employment agreement to Allison Werny, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter C, consider approval of contracting with Bosie's Five for psychological services or psychologist services. The recommendation is to approve special education contract with Bosie's Five for district school. Psychological services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. This is funded through the general fund, special education reimbursable. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
We're partly doing this because that position is remaining unfilled, correct?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of contracting with Bosie's Five for psychologist services? Not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter D, consider approval of contracting for teacher of the deaf services. The recommendation is to approve special education contract with DHH Consulting for teacher of the deaf hard of hearing group services. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. This is funded through the general fund reimbursable special education. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of. Approving special education contract with DHH Consulting for the teacher, teacher of the deaf hard of hearing. Not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter E, consider approval of proposed revision to GCSD number one principal contract document. The recommendation is to approve the revision to principal contracts as presented. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
I just have one quick question. The revision states that the district may terminate the contract, but district is not defined. Does district include board of trustees or how, how is that in, intended?
When I looked through the contract, it's kind of tricky. In that the prior contract had district and board references. What, what we have in this contract is that the board could serve as the hearing body if there were such a need. Thus, it was necessary to identify the fact that the district could actually terminate. And then the, the, the board could be responsible for hearing participation at a later date. So as, as I view it, the, the district could be Mr. Krim's recommendation that then it would.
Paul, do you have anything to add to that or anything?
No, that was a similar conversation that I had with Mr. Paul fifty regarding the usage of the.
Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor of approving the revision to Yoshi County School District number one principal contract document, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter F, consider approval of annual membership renewal with the Wyoming School Board Association. The recommendation is to approve purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the annual renewal of district membership with the Wyoming School Board Association. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the total amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars and twenty cents. This is funded through the general fund board. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the annual membership renewal with Wyoming School Board Association? In the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars and twenty cents, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter G, consider approval of contracting with JCK Foundation for student assembly presentations. The recommendation is to approve contracting with JCK Foundation for three days of middle school and high school student assembly presentations. In the total amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This is funded by a project aware. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
If I may, the, the funding source actually needs to be altered. In that, Trina initially thought that she had adequate money in project aware and in order to. To fund three days after sending a number of staff to be at a whole conference. It needs to be separated between project aware and sixty. And then there, there are adequate funds for a PK conference.
Sorry, Marcy, project aware and what was the other one?
Sixty, that'd be the, the grant for special education.
Thank you.
And project aware is, is a grant that's expiring. Funds have to be uncovered by September and spent by the December.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving contracting with JCK Foundation for student assembly presentations? In the total amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars funded by Project Aware and Sixty, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter H, consider approval of child nutrition cooperative agreement. The recommendation is to approve the CNC agreements to have revised. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Marc, you just want to quickly just point out that this is just a trial and revise. What, what the reason was that we're coming with the board a second time?
There, there's two additions towards the very end of the agreement. That would see the part of the school and support purchases as being excluded with the eighty percent. So that, that actually puts that with the. Under the child nutrition.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the child nutrition cooperative agreement as revised, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter I, consider approval of rehiring retirees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve hiring district retiree Deb Dunbar is a bus driver. And retiree Melty Gray is a bus driver for the district for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Her district policy forty-three oh two, rehire, rehire. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Right.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that Elsie Gray drove the bus when I was in kindergarten. And she's wonderful.
All those in favor of improving hiring district retiree Deb Dunbar and Elsie Gray for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am curious. Letter D is topics for discussion. Uh, this is a time for board members to see input from each other on time and topics. Number one, we have a session of working board meetings at various school sites around the district, so. Um, we just need to have a discussion about that.
So that's my idea. Um, I hope you guys go with it. Um. One of the biggest. Some of the feedback that we get from staff and teachers and so forth is that we don't spend enough time in the buildings, right? And we're not in the classrooms and we're not seeing things. It's true. We all have jobs, we all have lives, we all have, you know, things we have to do, and this job doesn't pay very well. Um, and so my thought is, why not take the opportunity when we have these monthly meetings to go to the buildings? And give the opportunity and the convenience um. For people to come to us and talk to us, and maybe we schedule a half hour or or an hour before the meeting starts for kind of a Q and A or some type of feedback. I'm not sure. I know it's super, super inconvenient for everybody at Central and so forth, but I'm hoping that maybe we as a board can get out there and talk to more. Parents, students, staff, teachers, whoever, um, just to try and. Bridge that gap a little bit. I don't know, maybe we give it a try for six months and see how it goes. That's assuming we're all still here in six months. Um, but you know, just to try and bridge that gap a little bit, so.
So um, this is not a necessarily new topic. We have discussed this in the past. Um, we've. Never taken any action on it or really got any traction on it, but um. I'm fully in support of giving it a try and. Going to different schools and different communities. See, now worked. Um, I guess the big question, everybody's agreement that's something we want to do. Um, when do we start and where do we want to start?
Next month.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not, I mean, we can start wherever. I don't really have. An opinion on where we start. Um, I don't know, maybe we draw it out of hat. I don't know, so that it's more random, but um.
Are you thinking the individual schools? Are you thinking the communities or or what? Like, are you thinking when we're in Torington, we're still here, or are you thinking like, like an elementary, elementary?
I think schools. I think we get in every building. Which I know is a lot.
What what you just have to decide then is is it probably inhibits us for anything on YouTube or Zoom capabilities. Um, we can probably do Zoom, but I know one of the biggest things that I get feedback on the YouTube is you can't hear. And I know that will be something that would be much worse at the. Other buildings. And I'm not saying that's a reason to not go with us, because I I am firmly in support of this. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of. These are, uh, these are the things that we'll probably have to suffer based on that, which is again perfectly fine. I am.
I trust, I trust that our I T people can figure it out. I really do. We're in the day and age where we do everything by Zoom. And I.
The hardest, the hardest is audio right now, because I mean, right now, this is typically how we. Address and we don't, they they're not good. So I I really even hear from those in in the crowd here that it's very tough for them to hear us snap.
Sure.
Um, that becomes even more problematic. Uh, at cafeterias, gyms, that is absolutely not a reason to not make this move, because again, I think it does show. A lot of things that that involved, it just means the technology is a little possibly not up here where we're at and just. We're gonna have to figure out ways in the next, and that's okay.
I hope we can figure out ways to adapt, and then I'm also hoping that people aren't watching these by YouTube. I hope people are coming in person. I mean, we need to hear from people. We just do. We need to hear from the staff and the teachers and the parents and students. Um, we're just not getting that feedback, and I think it's because it's difficult to come to these meetings in town. Um, you know, at this hour, so I'm hoping if we make it more convenient by being in their building. I don't know. I mean, and that's what I'm saying, maybe we just try six months and then reassess or something like that. I don't know.
Are you thinking the actual? Like, monthly? Moving this whole month and making two of them.
Yeah.
Because we have talked a lot about. Then quite a lot of them. Not actually moving the meeting, but how old they? What you're talking about, Neil and A, at the certain buildings? And just a group of us going, or everybody going um.
I was hoping that this would be easier to schedule because, like, we have tried to do those meetings. I don't know what we call them. But it's hard, right? It's one more meeting for us to have to go to. So my hope was.
And and doing it to you. I, we at one point, we were talking about doing our monthly meeting. At different schools, I they have that. Um, so my question would be. This is for Pete. And Mr. Kramer, is there a school that for maybe like a? Trial run or to get the games worked out that might be easier than the others or I think all about about the same ones. Okay. Hey. So is everybody in here, Lena, pick the school that you wanted to be at next? Next month and we'll figure it out.
If I pick the school, it's gonna feel like I'm picking favorites.
Your idea.
Next month, Southeast. You're welcome. You're welcome, Mr. Williams. We'll kick him out. No.
I just, I I know they use old gyms for like volleyball games and things I don't. As much as. You know, maybe the weather will still be nice. We can do it outside.
Yeah, right?
Um. I think. Then we're good. We're good. Yeah, we're good. Yeah. A lot going on that night. Is there is there, well, and maybe this does actually actually bring this out. There is a varsity volleyball game at Guernsey or Southeast that night.
Well, then we can try a different school. I mean, that that's totally fine.
Lingle doesn't have one that evening. Um, Torington does have a number of activities that evening, so probably Lingle would.
Perfect.
Worked the best Sep- September, but that's alright.
Perfect.
Everybody's grand house have these great.
Yeah. I know it's a lot for all of you guys. I do. I just hope that maybe it opens the doors to communication a little bit better.
Well, we don't know unless we try. Let's look at October also, just to get at least two, I'd like to say uh that much. Uh, it does look. Like um. Southeast to work on the October one, if we could, because Torington does have some activities in that way. Avoid uh Torington on that night, so. Can do that. September in Lingle? October.
And having the club, the lead gym, the December meeting back here. For um the purposes of the. And we usually do that as a work session and and have um M H P. Um, remote in and that type of thing, then.
We'll recover it in the new. Or is it water function?
That's for.
And I just can't remember anything.
And we can work on November one. Well, we. While we're here, why not just stay here? November twelfth. And we can go um any of the Torington schools for a little range that night. I don't know which would be preferred. Any preference? Maybe Torington school.
Yeah, I think maybe a Torington school.
Yeah. Lincoln Trail T M S T H S.
Lincoln.
Okay. Me and you. Thank you. Are there any other um topics for discussion in the board member relations in discussing?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, um, there was a couple that I'd like you to just bring up. Um, before school ended, um. I thought of the the topic of being able to somehow get recognition for um. For clubs within the school uh to be able to be thought of. And there was a suggestion that was made by a community member that um would it be possible to actually have the student reps? Uh, have kind of a standing mission within their monthly report? To be able to gather those um recognitions from their school? And allow them a few, a couple of minutes to be able to actually save those kind of, those recognitions. Um, they could actually be given um. Again, tho- those um. Accomplishments or achievements by their students, and they could actually bring support. But that would be very cool, I think.
It's a great idea.
Um. But yeah, when that time comes, I'll, but that is student reps.
That's perfect, because actually in mine, I have one of my items, items for student reps to talk about in months, so that's, that's great.
Okay, cool, thanks. Um, the next uh question that I have is um. Marcy, you you brought up that uh project aware that. That is no longer, what's the deployment for that? Is there?
So the items that project aware and actually, we would be able to speak to this. Best if she is still on. I'll give her a moment to. I don't. I don't see her on electronic. So I'll, I'll fill in what I know. One of the fortunate things that we did find from project aware and going through this process, uh, almost. Actually, I think it was a hundred percent. Applied for multiple funding facets, and so we were able to utilize and keep that partnership. With that program, um, but the funding stream would be either through uh family services that they're receiving. Or additional funding through Medicaid, so we're maintaining that relationship. And all students that were currently serving that will still be able to be served uh in future years without uh that project order funding. The piece that would be not repeated was the project award coordinator. But really, that was setting it up and making sure we had all of those things in place, which we do fortunately. And also the utilization of the J C K Foundation. Another thing that we're. We're analyzing right now is the use, I'm forgetting the name, Holly, can you help me with the uh student and staff services? Talk space. And so right now, we do have, there is a way to analyze data at the end of this year, because we're paying, we're paying for that subscription. And so that'll be something that the board, based on that data, will need to determine. That funding stream that we paid for is no longer there. Where does that rise in the level of importance? And and we know, I I I'm really excited. This Holly did a great job in representation. Uh, with Trina to the staff on how that can work for students and staff members in regards to mental health services.
The the other piece is that um the legislature was to allocate some mental health dollars and. Were to be competitive, if they were to be just allocated based upon districts. And um I have not seen that that come to fruition yet, but. But if that would come to fruition, that would be um another way to to help with that project to work.
The other. Comments there?
Not to beat a dead horse, but I think it's important to inform the public. Marcy, you sent out a fantastic script. For me pertaining to the free meals. I think there's been a lot of misinformation out there. This was not um a vote. This was encompassed in the budget. Marcy can talk about the funding um source for that, but it was a fantastic idea. Um, by Ramona, I believe, and Marcy to come together in that, but that was unanimously approved within the budget. Um, and does not cost the taxpayers extra money. But if, Marcy, do you mind expanding on that just briefly? Because I do think there's a lot of misinformation out there right now about that.
What um Trustee Muller is referencing is that the community eligibility provision. Of which with that, we received some funding based upon the participation that. The um. The the students are choosing to take a free breakfast or or free lunch. What what I shared with um Trustee Muller is the fact that. We we receive funds into the general fund that come in the form of a block grant. And um that that block grant is is not a hundred percent taxpayer dollars. That that block grant is money that comes into the district earmarked for for no particular purposes. That meaning the board has the responsibility to choose how the general fund dollars are spent. And those dollars are coming in the form of things such as um minerals in the state of Wyoming. There are some um property tax in that. But what what the um education funding has done is look at. All districts in the state of Wyoming in an attempt to make districts whole and make districts equal. So what um what they've done is they look at uh the A D M of each of the districts. And uh the student base in each of the districts, and then they look at what the districts have coming in. In the form of revenue from the direct county. And that um is a lot of districts is minerals. We, when when I look at minerals versus non-mineral, we are. We are very poor when it comes to to the mineral piece. So we have some districts that are known as um recapture districts, and those. Recapture districts are such that they actually are having to return. Money to the state going into the education foundation program. We um are such that we are actually receiving funds back. From some of those districts who are. Seeing funds greater than what the formula provides for a district of their size. Um, what what I shared and and the concern was that the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated. From general fund to food service, knowing that that was. A worst case scenario, if our participation were to to go up. Then we would see a greater reimbursement in that um need would be less. But that is not um money that we're receiving directly from. From property taxes from from taxpayers. That's dollars coming from that. Education foundation. It it used to be all sorts of um different allocations from uh. Leasing um dollars in the state, you would you would see that in in here, but. And that has really decreased as far as what we're receiving um. Coming from some of those um school leased land areas. But it it really is more the the minerals in in that piece and what our our state is is rich in. So I'm, I don't know if I missed anything or.
Nope, thank you.
Any other topics in discussion?
I'd just like to say, I really liked that farm to school presentation that we had today, and I think we. Kind of need to pursue that somehow, some shape or form. Uh, whether it's donations or actually buying it products or or what, but I think that'd be a really good thing to do.
Yeah, thank you, Ramona. I'm back for bringing that presentation to us and things, so we appreciate that. That was very good.
What are the next steps?
Alright. Nothing else? Letter H, uh, our future meetings. The W S B A Regional Policy will be hosted by Barbara's County School District in Douglas on the evening of Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. Registration is due by August twentieth. And number two, the next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M at the lean. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for your board.
I'm gonna jump back to future meetings, because as part of our work session, we talked about, um, setting up a work session to. Uh, have some other discussion around the next steps. Uh, so just wanting to set a date, uh, for that. Um, as you can see from the future meetings, the, what is our typical date, the Tuesday? Um, the fourth Tuesday is August twenty seventh, but that is in conflict with that, what, WSB A Regional Fall Meeting. Uh, I would encourage you to attend that. Um, I am going up to it. I've gone the last, um, four years. It is really informative relating to the state budget and how to speak, uh, to that in regards to education funding. So if you have an interest, um, in attending, please just let me know or let Lene know, uh, via email or however. Uh, you'd like to inform her, and you can certainly write up with me, or we can meet up there, but it is, it's very informative. But that also puts some conflict on whether, uh, that fourth Tuesday. So I would, uh, ask for any suggestions in relation to what might work if we go with that first Tuesday. Uh, if I want to stay with Tuesday, uh, then. That would be. That would be the third. And I know that has a conflict on the third, I see, uh, for one of our trustees. Um, or we can go back to previous week on the Thursday. Which is the twenty ninth. Don't look for any conflicts on our Thursday conflicts. Is there a preference on? I don't see any conflicts on that. Night on the twenty ninth. Unless someone has conflicts with that. Okay. Twenty ninth then, and. Time, uh, we were, we started at six o'clock for our work session this evening. Does that still work for the majority of the board? Knowing that there might be some times in which your females, like, are anything like that. Okay, six o'clock on the twenty ninth, we will go for a work session here at central office. Then I will jump on to sharing my screen here quickly. It's really small. There we go. Thank you, Pete. Um, so this just is our Excel document that Lene updates, uh, providing the. Uh, highlighting of open positions, these, the open positions, we still have the district school site that we discussed earlier. For an item that we are, um, addressing through that purchase. And then the open item for speech pathologists, uh, the only other items. Uh, we did have a spilling of halftime, uh, position for PE. Uh, that was approved this evening, and then, uh, right now, we have an inactive posting for special education that we've accommodated. Uh, and have a plan moving forward with that, uh, and will still work on this. The other one was the, uh, transfer of social worker Shalke to the council role. Allison warning being awarded that contract this evening. And so as you can see, we've come a long way from where we were, uh, in June and even July. The other items that I had, um, was just an update on the staff trainings, uh, yesterday. Uh, half the staff training started for all staff. Uh, half the morning AM was spent in buildings, uh, for teachers and classified staff. Um, if they were part of building meetings, and then the afternoon was our regular all-staff meeting. Uh, that included, uh, information in regards to talkspace that Holly and Trina presented and updates from HR. We also did an update on our MTSS, uh, and our program that we're utilizing for that. Today, we had Breeze Daniels, uh, speaking with certified staff, uh, relating to our PLC work, uh, in the next, uh, school year. Tomorrow will be the leader in me training. Uh, we have three different groups, uh, one being in the THS auditorium. Uh, second being in the THS boardroom, or excuse me, bandroom, and the TMS bandroom. So we're utilizing three smaller groups for our trainings tomorrow. And then Thursday and Friday are teacher workdays, and then Monday is our first day of school for the twenty four twenty five school year. The other item, Carlos kind of already spoke to it, and so we added some things, but looking for, um. Items for the student reps for topics, if there are things or items that you would like them to report on, uh, please let me know. Um, it is helpful to kind of have an idea of what we can give them, so they have some time. I love the idea of recognizing, uh, clubs and activities in there that definitely gives them some opportunities there. But if there's other topics that you're hearing about to get the student perspective, um, please do not hesitate to shoot me an email. And I will create a list and, uh, keep a running list of what things we can have them, uh, report on. That's everything I had. We're off to the school year. Hard to believe. I even got, you know, choked up on the. Talking about my, uh, senior again, it's, uh, the whole, whole staff introduction. Now, those senior years are tough. So, but I I also bet on a lot of kindergarten parents that I remember also those kindergarten years and sending them off to kindergarten. Uh, like Mac is doing, uh, this year is not the easiest step I, so. They are, they they're good. Trust, trust me, mine, mine has been just fine for the whole process, so it all works out. But we're really excited to have the kids, staff, um, and the the opportunity I have had. I don't know if you've had other additional emails, but I do want to speak, uh, the program in regards to our meals for students. I have had a number of community members stop me at the fair, email me, um, thanking me. And from all ranges, and it is just something that I think is gonna be really exciting to, I'm really excited. As I was talking to a parent last night at the high school level, especially at THS, grab them no lunches. So we can have students grab their lunch, still have open campus, still have opportunities and utilize that. So thank you for that, and look forward to Monday and the first day of students. Okay, with that, we're good.